We're behind the property, that 35 acres back there. It's now called Woodside Subdivision. I didn't go in front of the board and say, geez, I love the deer and I love the animals and I want you to keep it like that. And I would have wished they were able to do that. But I don't think I have the right to say that. I think people have the right to develop their property the way they want to develop their property unless you own that property, you really don't have the right to do that. As far as emergency vehicles, I doubt an ambulance is going to jump the crest over there to get to somebody that had a heart attack. I think it just doesn't make a lot of sense for traffic and I don't think that from a development standpoint, it makes a lot of sense to have that street not go through. In marketing the property, when I get the buyers that come into that property, the biggest deterrent is, why can't we just go to Wooddale Road? This is ridiculous. Why do we have to drive all the way around? And that's why the only two properties that are going to be sold are probably the ones that are on Florina Court. I don't think it's fair to the other properties that happen to be on Grove and Center that they get the traffic and Florina Court doesn't. It doesn't make any sense to me. That's nice, I'd like to have a private street. Where I live, I'd love to have a private street and just, I'm the only one on the road and let the public pay for it. But I don't think I have the right to do that either, you know? I think you've got to look at not only the people that live there, but also the people that are going to be living there. And we have to develop properties in Wooddale to keep Wooddale as a thriving area. You have to make sure that these properties are developed into nice homes. He wants to build beautiful homes there. But, you know, if he's got a deterrent like this, that I don't think it was designed as a cul-de-sac because it had to be a dead-end street. It was designed as a cul-de-sac because they only own that much land and that's the only way they can develop that land. So, you know, that's not why it was developed in the first place. If you ask somebody, do they want the street to be opened up? Well, of course not. I mean, it doesn't even make sense. I can tell you right now what the vote's going to be. It's going to be sure. I'd love to live on a dead-end street. I'd like to put a dead end right next to my house so no one else can go any farther. But again, I don't think I have the right to say that. So, I don't know if you have any questions from a real estate standpoint? I'm a real estate broker, I've been in the area for a real long time. I don't know if you want to... Any questions from that standpoint?
Mayor?
I do have a question from a real estate standpoint. As a general rule though, isn't, don't you charge a premium for a lot that's on a dead-end street? Isn't that a desirable location?
If it's on a dead-end street that you have access to. You know, I mean, if you look at when Woodside was developed, there's a dead-end street called Butternut and it was in the Wood subdivision. When they developed Woodside, they didn't block that off. And I'm sure if you asked anybody on Butternut and on Hackberry, they would have said, hey, I don't want that to go through. I lived on Deer Path, I didn't want it to go through. Sure, one more car, I'm against it. But I don't, again, I don't think I have the right to say that. And Woodside goes through into the Wood subdivision because it makes sense for traffic. If there was an accident on one exit, you need to be able to get through there. There's an accident that happens on Grove and that court, you can't get through. Just like a water line that goes around in a circle. You want access, as much access as you possibly can. You're talking about 10 houses that are going to increase the traffic flow. You're not talking about... The end of the street goes into Salt Creek. There's no cut-throughs there. I can't imagine someone's going to drive four blocks around to get 50 more feet down the street. I mean, that's great, but I can't imagine anybody doing that. You know, my office is right there, two blocks away. I drive through there all the time. I'm not going to ever go all the way down and around to see if I can gain a couple more feet. And certainly if they were going to do that, they go down by the library and cut all the way down to commercial. They certainly aren't going to go up on Florina Court. So, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
With all due respect, you haven't answered my question yet. As a general rule, isn't it more valuable for the lot to be on a dead-end street?
If the dead-end street goes to easy access, you'd still need access. The dead-end street, if that had a dead-end street all the way down on Grove, that would make more sense. Then it was a dead-end street and the people had access to get onto Wooddale Road. But nobody wants to drive all the way around. You know, unless of course you're in an area like off of 83, that's why they did Dunley Court, you're talking about a major cut-through right there. This isn't an area where there's any traffic coming from Salt Creek. There's no bridge over Salt Creek.
Okay. We have one comment from a gentleman in the audience, Alderman Tomlin. Then we've got to wrap this up.
Can I just make one more thing? Is that, and there's a lot of discussion going back and forth and obviously it's obvious that you don't want the street to go open, okay? Another alternative that we've thought of is can we take that blockade, that berm, and move it down toward the end where the retention area is? Okay? That would be, that would keep, this is a dead-end street, floor of Florina Court folks as it stands right now, and it would, your blockade would still be there. We're open to that. Just basically moving that down the street so that we, our residents, our potential customers can get access off of Wooddale Road. It's, we'd be open to that.
Okay, sir. And then David, and then let's wrap it up.
Hi, folks. Just one other comment. I don't think anybody else but myself was standing here 17 years ago in the old Wooddale City Hall when this subdivision was approved. So, I'm not too sure how private roads and all that fall in. But that is a public dedicated street. I know your opportunity here is to market that item, to get it sold and get those items built. We do want that. That's not something that we don't want. And we do realize that that area was being developed to the west. And if folks realize, when I came up here, what did I say? Three things. One, no through-street. Two, take care of the water so you take care of the people downstream. Think of the other people in Wooddale, right? And three, make sure that you don't screw up our detention area. Well, you know, right now, the grading on our detention area to the west isn't even right. Okay? So, let's get all this stuff correct first and let's make sure that we move forward in the right way that we should before we start changing a lot of stuff. And look towards the residents too, could you please? And I definitely, I want all these houses sold too. I wish they were built, like the mayor said, two years ago. I wish they were built really quick and all the sales tax were coming in. All the property taxes were coming in for it. But unfortunately, that's not the case.
Alderman Tomlin.
Two things. First off, Mr. Soltis, I live on Grove, I live right at the end of that development. And I will tell you that there is a lot of traffic that is in that area. Believe it or not, there's a lot of traffic, okay? Unfortunately...
You're going to get more, aren't you?
You know what? I understand it, but, and I understand that too. I mean, right now, you know, with the way this street is, if, you know, when all those homes are built, the traffic, the lights are going to come right into my front room, okay, every night. You know, and I don't, I understand that. That's, it's like you said, you know, developer has a right to build. You know, it's your property, you have a right to build. And that's we allowed them to do, or they, you know, the council allowed them to do. I think, going back to something that was brought up though, I think maybe what you need to do now is maybe sit down and talk with these residents, you know, that live there and talk to them about, you know, how would they feel? Because I don't know how they would feel, okay? Moving, you know, moving and making it a dead end at the other end and having it all one, you know, so that, you know, you could, the only entrance and exit would be Wooddale Road. I think that's what you were alluding to. Okay? I don't want to, you know, I think you need to sit down with these residents though and talk to them and find out. Because right now, as is, the way it is right now is the way they want to keep it. Okay? And from that perspective, I mean, when this thing was originally approved, that's what was agreed to. You know, I'm sorry, you know, I'm sorry you bought this development from this other developer, okay? You know, but again, as I stated earlier, that's not our problem. Okay? I mean, we can't, as a city, we can't help you with that. I agree with Alderman Wesley and what he said as far as, you know, we own some property over here, you put up your little signs on the weekends, you know, we could, you know, if it would be in the interest of the council, we could do that for you. You want to put up a big sign over on the old ball field here on Commercial? I'm sure we would be open to doing that, you know, to help you try and move those homes. But as far as opening that road, I think you need to sit and talk with these residents, okay, about how would they feel about blockade, blockading it at the other end so that you could get back to those homes, at least up to that retention point. Now, I mean, and again, I'm not going to talk for them, I know how they feel, so...
Okay, the matter before us right now is either to remove the barricade or not. Anybody on the council knows this was a very difficult development to get through to finalize the agreement and that. So based on that, I make a motion to deny the removal of the barricade between Florina Court and Timber Court, subject to the terms of the original developer's agreement.
Second.
Roll call, please.
The motion was to deny, correct?
Yes. The motion is to deny.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Suback?
Yes.
Alderman Shawkey?
Yes.
Alderman Pizik?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Tomlin?
Yes.
Motion passes. It is denied. Okay, next item. Our items to be considered at future meetings. Rental housing program implementation with policies and procedures. Overcrowding report update. Re-zoning map amendment with discussion of exploring zoning code rewrites. Engineering site grade review with top of foundations for subdivision requests involving more than two lots. Changes to the ZBA procedures and subdivision code. Is there any additional items? Anybody? Alderman Tomlin?
Yeah, I have one. I'd like to add on that discussion on reduction of lot coverage from two acres to one acre to require stormwater retention.
Okay.
And subdivision code? Okay.
You know what? We do have a stormwater committee and they're very dedicated. I think that would be something that we should let them deal with first and then maybe the recommendation, because I'm assuming you picked one out of the air, maybe the recommendation would be...
No, actually, there's a history. The city had an ordinance originally, years before, I was on the council, I think years before anybody here was on the council, where the zoning, or to require stormwater, it was one acre. And somebody on the council at that time knew somebody who had, who wanted to build in the area and they were slightly under two acres. So, they changed it so that they'd make it two acres so that it wasn't required. So that's what happened.
I don't know the whole history. I thought we were following the DuPage County stormwater ordinance when we changed. But maybe there is more political history. But I do think that that is a good project for the stormwater commission to deal with first because I wouldn't want to pass a one acre, maybe the stormwater committee thinks that it should be .75. So I just think that they should look at the issue first and make a recommendation to us. That's what they're there for and qualified to do.
Wow. Okay. Mr. Noak, do you want to bring that to the storm letter first and then see what your recommendations and then back to committee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Alderman Suback's statement and I believe I can hand that off to Mr. Home and we will certainly work together on bringing that back and with the appropriate commentary.
Thank you.
This is why things don't get done.
The NAPA auto request reminded me that apparently we do not have an ordinance or a requirement that where commercial abuts residential that we require fencing or screening. This has been a problem at the Taco Bell site on the neighbor to the south, was constantly getting refus'd onto his property. So at some future date, we should probably address that and make that part of our code that where we have a commercial use of abutting residential, I see Mr. Noak wants to talk, some kind of enforced screening as a policy.
Mr. Noak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The mayor is correct. Although if you can recall, in certain instances in the past, specific to Lennar's project, we have allowed, and this came up at discussion at council whereby, well, we approved as part of the subdivision plan, the 10-foot fence. So, I don't know if you want to leave that portion of it flexible or if you do want to think about talking or discussing the height variations for anything separating either business or commercial and residential. Certainly it's, it should not be a problem. If you'd like to put that on the agenda, we can certainly do the commentary for you.
Okay. No, any additional items for that? Now I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we go to the next meeting, can we give our minute taker a five-minute break here?
Are we ready? Call the Public Works meeting to order for November ninth, two thousand and six. Let the record reflect the same members are present. Make a motion to approve the minutes of October twelfth, two thousand and six. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is item number four. It's the two thousand and six roadway improvement project, which I'm happy to announce has been completed, except for punchless items. This is the reconstruction of Murray Street, Montclair Lane, Iroquois, and the resurfacing of Prospect and the other street. Alderman Winger?
At the perimeter around Georgetown, there was Prospect. And Potter?
Thank you. Make a motion to approve pay request to R.W. Dunham in the amount of ninety-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is item number four. It's the two thousand and six roadway improvement project, which I'm happy to announce has been completed, except for punchless items. This is the reconstruction of Murray Street, Montclair Lane, Iroquois, and the resurfacing of Prospect and the other street. Alderman Winger?
At the perimeter around Georgetown, there was Prospect. And Potter?
Thank you. Make a motion to approve pay request to R.W. Dunham in the amount of ninety-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By the two opposition motion carries. Next is item number five. This is the report and recommendation of the Cliffstead Lift Station Special Service Area Number Thirteen Engineering Contract Award. As part of Special Service Area Number Thirteen, we are doing a lift station. Again, I remind everybody, this is an idea that came through Alderman Winger and myself when we sat through with back then Craig Wright, going through the special service area and deciding what we could put in there. We actually have a lift station here that partly benefits the residential area, but also partly benefits the industrial park. So, the industrial park is actually going to pay for this cost. And for the engineering services, we got requests out from five different companies and staff is recommending Burke for the engineering. My question for Gary or David, David's not here, Gary. It says in there that they weren't the lowest and were not required because it's professional services. Were they the highest or where were they in range with everybody else? If you know.
I do know, and they were not the highest, but they were second highest.
And how much was the difference in the range?
And at that, I think, I think, and I'll get you an exact value next week, but I think it was significant between them and the next lowest. But again, why we, we had kind of laid out why we, we did that, why, why we went down that road. We have a level of confidence in what they were going to provide compared to the next lowest person and just feel, did not feel that the next lowest person was going to provide the same level of service that we need out there.
Do you think the difference in that service level could be taken care of in-house? Or is that an expertise level that we're not going to have in-house and that we've got to, we won't be able to in-source any of this work?
Well, this, this is an hourly contract, so it's going to be based on the actual hours that they, that they work with a not-to-exceed value. We're, after speaking with Christopher Burke, they've assumed the worst-case scenario for construction. And, you know, we're going to optimistically go into it, assuming that, you know, we won't have the worst-case scenario and that we'll be have more of a normal course of construction, in which case we'll be able to bring their total costs down. They've, they've, again, assumed the worst-case scenario, the worst scenario, so that they can put the maximum dollars in upfront.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Wesley?
I'll, I'll approve this, but the problem is, I do want to see what the other prices was.
Sure.
For all of them.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Just to clarify, for purposes, so we don't get sued later, lowest responsible bid or lowest conforming bid, is that which, what are you saying?
This is for professional services, so...
Lowest responsible bidder?
I don't think...
You did go out for bid, though, right?
We, we basically sought qualifications slash proposals. So, for, for professional services, your award is, under state law, supposed to be based on qualifications, a qualifications-based selection. And then, for smaller projects like this, we do a combination qualifications plus the cost. I'll talk about that a little more later on tonight.
So, I agree with Alderman Wesley that we should see the other pri, other cost. But at this point, it's only a committee, so I'd make a motion to approve the professional services contract for the Cliffstead Lift Station replacement to Christopher Burke Engineering for an amount not to exceed eighty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is item number six. This is the street sufficiency engineering contract. I can tell we hired an in-house engineer because he has now come up with a new term of our pavement management system. Basically, we're going to be reshuffling the deck. It's my understanding that next year, in the budget, we will not, we'll be going away from doing any reconstruction projects for roadway projects. We will be still doing resurfacing projects where we have existing curb and gutter, but this will allow us to update the street sufficiency study. Last time it was done, it was, I believe, in two thousand and one. We're going to have updated equipment, and we're basically going to take an x-ray of the street and be able to see really underneath what the quality is. Went out for bid for professional services, and staff is recommending infrastructure management services in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. I make that as my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, Alderman Toleme?
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that, that these guys are not just going to drive down the street and eyeball it because, because the last time we had the street sufficiency done, that's exactly what happened. And I called, and I won't go into who the engineering firm was, but I called the engineer on it and said, "How can you just drive down this, how can your people just drive down the street and, and eyeball without actually getting out and looking?" Because, you know, when we get these reports or the studies, they come back and they show, you know, how many cracks and the separations and everything, as you know, in, in the street. And, and I think that's really, if, we want to make sure, I want to make sure that doesn't happen again, okay? That this is more scientifically done, that it's really, these streets really are bad. It's, and it's, so that if I go and I find one that's not on the list, I could come back and say, "Well, you know, they said this is not as bad as this, but it is," you know?
Gary, can you explain a little bit of the process?
Sure. And historically, the only technology that was available was the engineer's judgment. And you're right, they would go out and they would look at the pavements and then make...
Gary, they didn't even walk them though.
I realize, and that was, that was not...
They drove it.
And that was pretty standard practice. That is pretty standard practice.
Okay.
Because, again, the technology didn't exist back then, you know, and that, that practice was established, you know, many, many years ago. And they would estimate a percentage of cracking, they would estimate percentage of, of alligators, you know, failures. And that methodology was in place for many, many years. This, what we are now doing, is a more subjective, and that's, that's the whole point of, I'm sorry, yes, more, thank you, a more objective approach. And that's the whole point for me bringing this forward through the budget process and then now into, hopefully, you know, through a contract, is to get an objective view of every single street in town. And you will see when the van is out, that the van has a, you know, sensor bar on the front and a sensor bar on the back, and they measure oxidation, they measure percentage of cracks, they measure the reveal on the curb and gutter, they measure amount of spaw, or spalling or failures, that they measure a whole bunch of criteria, a lot of the same criteria that we used to do with just our eyes, but now it's being done, you know, with sensors and, and, and the machines don't, don't lie, you know, the eyes kind of estimate. And I would like to point out that the budget for this, we did have fifty thousand dollars in the budget, and I arrived at that value based on my experience from my previous employer and what we paid to have the service provided down there. That was not only the study down there, but also some of the front-end software. And Dave Graff has the ability to, basically, basically, it's ax, through Access Database, has the ability to develop some of the front-end pages, some of the basic things that we're going to need, and then to link that data into our GIS system, so we can accomplish basically all the same goals for a considerably amount less money and do that in-house. So, the fifteen thousand represents all the fieldwork and all the condition ratings for all of the streets in basically raw data form that will come to us, and then we will be able to take that and make it look pretty at the council in the form of color maps and, 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 and...
Were all the companies that we did a request for proposals using the same technology with respect to what, how they're getting this data for us? Or was one of these doing something different than the other?
No, we had specifically stated in our, in our request for proposals what we, what we wanted.
I was surprised at how low the bid was. What were the other ones that came in at?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Alderman Wesley?
Again, I would ask that the other proposal prices come forward before approval at the council meeting.
I agree, because again, if, if everybody else was forty thousand, one was fourteen, I'd want to say, "Why was one fourteen? Are they doing something different?"
This, this company, the, the one that we're recommending, was the firm that I'm familiar with and I actually worked with in Lockport. Infrastructure Management is a Chicagoland company. I know Dyna Test and Applied Research are out-of-state companies. There's really only a handful of companies across the nation that do this, and, and just Infrastructure Management goes out of state to other, to other places, and, and the other places come here. They just happen to be the Chicagoland company that, that bid our, our project pretty competitively.
One second, Dave, we'll get, oh, sure. Once we get this data, though, like, one of the things that Alderman Winger and I would do is after we had the old sufficiency study, it would be in five-year blocks. We were still, within those five years, moving some of those to line them up with the water and storm sewer projects. I'm assuming that we're not going to get an updated stormwater or a water and sewer update at this point, so we're still going to need to do some of that eyeballing to line these things up with those water projects, correct?
Correct. And we do have the utilities, the Streets and Utilities Division, I've got their long-term goals to, to make sure that we can relook at our capital projects, and, and then we'll try and fit the two together. Like you said, we'll want to do a water main project at the same year that we're doing a roadway project. And by us getting all the raw data for the street sufficiency study, we'll then be able to break it up into those five-year blocks, and we'll be able to manipulate that data so we can make it work within those, within those five-year blocks.
Great. Alderman Toleme?
Two things. First off, if I read this right, only two of the, out of the four actually responded with some middles, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Second, did I understand right that you had budgeted fifty thousand for this?
We did budget fifty thousand.
And, and you only expect to use fourteen thousand or fifteen thousand, basically?
Correct.
So, that means roughly there's thirty-five thousand left? Could that be applied to putting in the sidewalks on Cedar?
It's a Road and Bridge Fund, general funds, fund...
So, it could be applied towards putting that in? So, how much more would we need to do?
I don't remember what the estimate on Cedar was. I thought the estimate on Cedar was well over a hundred thousand.
Well, it's thirty-five towards it, so find your rest, Gary. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Now, to make a motion, or a motion to award the professional services contract for the street sufficiency study to be awarded to Infrastructure Management Services in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I apologize, I know we went out of order, and we should skip down to, without objection, item number fourteen. This is the item that the resident had been waiting very patiently for. This is the Oakwood Drainage Issues at two fifty-six slash two sixty Oakwood Drive. We've got a long, very long memo and thorough from David Graff, everything you want to know and more on that area. So, I was thinking he was going to be here tonight, but I'm assuming, Gary, you can provide a summary?
I will. I'll go through and kind of hit the high points in this memo as, as opposed to reading it word for word.
And has, does the resident, did he get a copy of this?
He did.
Okay.
At the very back, you see the watershed drawing, which kind of defines the entire watershed, as well as the project location there for, for two fifty-six Oakwood, and you can reference those as you need to. The overall watershed that we're talking about here is approximately eleven point three acres in size. And within that eleven point three acres, the largest single lot is the Holy Ghost Church, which is approximately five acres of that. The general drainage pattern is westward toward Salt Creek. Some of that drainage has been intercepted via a storm sewer that heads north to Irving Park. That storm sewer today would not be permitted. I mean, the state would not permit a storm sewer to go to their system where the water wasn't naturally tributary to their system. I'm assuming, I'm assuming that that storm sewer was placed in there probably around the vintage of the original homes. We, as you know, did just reconstruct that sewer and were able to do so without a permit from the state because it was a maintenance activity, that the sewer was in need of repair. If we were to upsize or if we, if that sewer didn't exist and we wanted to put it in today, that would not be permitted by the state. Second page, it does talk about the fact that residential properties rely on ditches and swales to convey stormwater because there's no curb and gutter. And then it's noted that of particular concern are the side yards of two fifty-six, that the north side is completely paved over where the driveways are, and the south side, there's, there's no longer any evidence of a functioning swell, it's, it's been filled in and replaced with just a six-inch storm sewer. Note that the hundred-year flood elevation is lower than the house, but the property itself is, is within the hundred-year flood. In other words, during a hundred-year flood, the property will see water, but the physical house structure will not. Down at the bottom of that second page, it talks about the, the flows or the runoff coming from the watershed, and you'll see those values, and then we'll reference those values again, because for the existing storm sewers, both the fifteen-inch pipe I was just talking about and the six-inch pipe, they have a capacity of, of seven CFS. And if you look back over there, you'll see that seven CFS is even less than the two-year storm. And what that means is that the excess flows, they rise in the ditches because the storm sewers aren't sufficient, and then they, it overtops the pavement and it wants to, it wants to flow west, but the, the side yards have been filled in, so it has nowhere to go. And that, that's where you're, that's where you're seeing the, the water's filled, or the yard's filled with water out there. We did outline some corrective measures. One was to remove the six-inch storm sewer and reestablish that drainage swell, so that as the water does flow into that area, it has someplace to go and, and to flow out. And another option would be to construct a storm sewer to convey water down to Salt Creek, and that storm sewer would have to go through that same side yard, because again, as I just said to you, we can't go north with it to Irving Park, the state will not permit that, because that water is not naturally tributary to Irving Park Road. Now, we, going on, and I want to, I'll get back to the stormwater in a second, but I do want to, do want to talk about the sanitary sewer issues, because I believe that there's issues on both the storm and the sanitary side. Talking with the residents out there today, we made numerous attempts to get ahold of the homeowner at two sixty, several phone calls and, and several knocks on the door, and it wasn't until this afternoon when I actually, I myself was out there and was able to talk to that homeowner for the first time. He's going to contact me for us to, to go in and do another inspection on the inside of his house. But talking with him, he's indicated that there's some pretty significant sanitary sewer backups, historically, that have occurred out there. And my response was that we need to, you know, I, I know that if the issue's been going on for many years, you know, it's many years before I've, I've gotten here. So, now that I'm here, I, I want to be aware of them, and I'll let my field crews know what's expected of them when, when they are called. I've told these residents to, you know, call immediately the police dispatch number when it happens, and then we can get out there, so that we can start looking at it and see if it is a system problem or if there's something else going on. So, I, I, sanitary is an open book at this point in time with a resolution which, which, which hasn't been determined yet. So, sanitary is out there, I recognize that that's an issue. All right, back to stormwater.
Gary, before you go on...
Hold on, Gary.
Didn't we just, I thought we just put in new storm sewers and...
There's a new sanitary sewer on that street.
Sanitary sewers.
There is.
So, shouldn't that have corrected the problem if they're...
If it's more systematic, though, it could be a downstream or an upstream problem. Now, that, that, there isn't really an upstream, because that, that sanitary sewer really only covers...
Covers that area.
Yeah.
Right.
So, it's, if there is a systematic problem, it's probably a downstream problem.
Okay.
And, and, and that would have then, you know, a brand-new pipe wouldn't do anything to solve a downstream problem.
Okay.
But we need to, that's what I mean by our field observations, we need to know when it's happening, so we can be out there and start doing that investigation.
Okay.
Back to stormwater. It needs to be recognized that two fifty-six Oakwood and, and that general area is at the bottom of, of the watershed, and that the watershed does then want to drain westward. At the bottom, under summary and recommendations, it says that, "Looking at the topography, it, it's clear that the natural pre-development drainage was directly through the land, which is now occupied by two fifty-six Oakwood." Let me jump up, and I know I jumped a little bit here, but the impact of development on vacant lots, that's another issue that's been brought up, is that somehow the two new vacant lots there, that, that they've contributed to the problem. We're assuming that those are both about a quarter acres in size, and if that's the case, they, they represent about four percent of the overall watershed, so they really, you know, ninety-six, ninety-six percent of the watershed hasn't, hasn't changed. We just don't feel that the vacant lots have, have any real bearing. Four percent is negligible. I'll go to the end. Basically, it's a recommendation would be, we're, we're not making a formal recommendation. We, we, we have identified the issues. The water is sitting in the yards, the water is sitting in the ditches, the water is sitting, you know, and, and then across the road. The water's not sitting in anyone's living room. The water's not sitting in anyone's living room. The water's not sitting in anyone's basement. The water's sitting where the water should be sitting. And to install a 21-inch sewer all the way to the creek is probably well in excess of $100,000 to solve, you know, a yard, a yard drainage issue. Removal of the sway, of the six-inch pipe and installation of a swale would be considerably less money, and that would involve work on our, our part as well, again, for elimination of a yard drainage issue. This will be one of those roads that ultimately will be improved with curb and gutter. And at that time, we will need to address conveyance of, of storm water because we won't be able to bring it all north to Irving Park Road. So at one point in time, we're going to have to address this issue anyways. And I guess the question would be, do we want to address, you know, address this issue starting now or wait until the road is improved with curb and gutter? Somehow, someday, we've got to get additional conveyance going west to the creek because we're not going to be allowed to bring it north to Irving Park. And, and I think in the interim, the best way to do that is via the swale. And ultimately, once we have closed drainage and curb and gutter, then we can look at a sewer system. But that, that's, I guess, my summary of this report.
Before we go to the council, the resident, if you want to step up, and I don't know if you just got this report today?
I got it today. All I want to say is, if you reinstall a swale there, where's it going, what's it going to do? It's going to direct the water to sit in my backyard at this point. I've shown these pictures, I don't know how many times. If you want to put one up on the overhead, I'm not going to print them up for everybody again because you've all gotten them before. But here's the picture of your overflowing storm sewer. That's what was put in coming off of the church parking lot. Why is it not the responsibility of church to hold on to their water? Why are they allowed to, to ship it downhill to the next guy? Actually, it would be the top right picture. That's the storm sewer, or that's the cap that's coming directly off the church parking The picture on the top left, again, it's not real clear there, that's my front yard. That whole street is flooded with the ditch across the street, which leads into the storm sewer. That backs up. It's not working the way it's supposed to be working. The, the water is actually coming back out of the storm sewer before it flows over the street. Why is it my responsibility to eliminate the water that's coming down the street a half a block away? You know, according to the six-inch pipe that was installed, that was installed when the house was built. I had nothing to do with that. That's what was approved when the house was built, you know?
So when you get water in your yard like that, do you ever get it into your house?
No, not into the house, but it starts up here. My sump pump runs for 24 hours straight because it can't handle the groundwater anymore.
And then...
I'm completely surrounded. If you look...
Then when, when you get completely surrounded, I've seen your pictures, I don't, when you get completely surrounded, how long does it usually take to drain?
It'll go down within a day. This bottom one that you can't really tell up there, that's my driveway. So I've got water running down my driveway and then running down on the other, opposite side of my house. I'm completely surrounded. I know I live a block away from the creek, but I'm not being affected by the creek. I'm being affected by the storm sewer.
Can you tell me in the past, in, like, the past year, how many times would you get surrounded by this? Is it...
Every time we get any type of heavy rain.
So this past...
It's not even, even when we have a, a light rain. It's, that sewer cannot handle the water coming off.
Right.
He's got it in his report as to what that should handle, and that storm sewer should have never been allowed to be put in, tied into Oakwood because it was never figured in. They never accounted for that water coming down.
So in the past year, how many times has your house been surrounded with water?
Three or four times, easy. The last two years before that, we were in the drought. We didn't have any, that much rain.
Right.
And every time we had a heavy rain, it would come up, it would be surrounded. I've been fighting this battle with Craig Wright for 10 years, you know? I'm surprised it never got to you guys. I, I looked up records. I filled out FOYAs for all the times I called and complained, and there, there doesn't seem to be any, they never kept records of it before. Now I call the police non-emergency number so I can, I can verify that there's a record of my calling.
Gary, one of the things we approved earlier was the street sufficiency study. When do we expect to get that back?
The street sufficiency study, the street sufficiency study, if we award it now in November, depending on the severity of the winter, they certainly can do that work through the winter. If the roads are snow-covered, they won't be able to, but I didn't mention many, many things in the winter time. So if that's the case, we probably could have it by, I would say, April to May of, of next year.
Because, you know, my concern is I, I wouldn't want to put $100,000 into this area and then all of a sudden find out that the street sufficiency study shows that this street's going to be done in 2008 or 2009, and then we're going to redo that work that we're going to do once. I, I do support, you know, trying to do some types of drainage or swales. I know we had this issue in the woods with water coming off of, from the forest preserve, and the city assisted the homeowner in having the swales built between the two houses to help the water drain on Edgewood. And, you know, those are the type of things I think that we should continue to look at and support. I don't know if the homeowner's willing, if he's had a chance to digest some of the requests, but if he's willing to, you know, have some of those swales between those properties, we'd have to contact the other property owner, and we don't need to decide that tonight, but that's kind of the direction I think we should go. Any other comments from the aldermen? Or Gary?
The, the $100,000 that I, I threw out there was, was the storm sewer alternative. It'd probably be every bit of that to go to Salt Creek, but the swales obviously would be less, much less expensive. We recognize that on our property downstream or in his rear yard, that we would need to have a ditch or a swale cut through that property because it does not drain by gravity out to the ditch line there. So we would also have to look at doing that swale on that property and possibly even some new culverts under Edgewood. That would be the city's portion of it. We would still need to have the, the portion done though on the private property at 256 in order to, to connect it all together.
Is the homeowner willing to, if we go forward with the, with the swales?
Who's going to pay for it?
With the swales? We would be paying for the portion on the city property and you'd be paying for...
What did I mean for something that should have never been allowed in the first place?
Mr. Williams?
Yes, myself and, and Dave Graff went out to the site and, and walked the whole entire area with, with the homeowner. And as soon as...